Okay, good morning. This is the January 14th, 2020 hearing for the Baltimore City Council Health Committee. I'm Councilman Christopher Burnett, Chairman of the Committee. Also in attendance, we have Mary Pat Clark representing the 14th District.
Sir?
Ed Risinger representing the 10th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
From the Mayor's Office, we have Nina Themelis. I do see Jeff Amoros from the Health Department in the back. Let's see anyone from U Law. Marcia Collins from DPW. And I'll give you an opportunity to introduce your team.
Thank you.
If you'd like in a second. And to my immediate right is Marguerite Karen, the Committee's staff person. We are here today to discuss Council Resolution 19-0183R, to have a discussion regarding a recent pipe break that spilled chlorinated water into the Dead Run Stream and killed over 2,000 fish. And the hearing will begin with, there we go. So, Mr. Ferant, if you want to come up, introduce yourself and the organization you're here to represent, and provide your testimony, what you saw.
Okay, I'm George Ferant, and I'm a member of the Friends of Gwynne's Falls Leaking Park. And back in September, on a Saturday morning, I get a call from my colleague who was down in the park, and she said that the Dead Run River was running very high. It hadn't rained for many, for almost a month or more, and it was looking pretty ugly. So could I take a look at it? So I went down and saw that the river was about four inches higher than normal, and it was brown, or very cloudy, gray, and it wasn't clear the way it normally is. So I suspected a sewer break, because there are sewer lines that run through the Dead Run River as it goes through Wyman's Meadow of Leaking Park. So I traced the, I went on Franklin Town Road, looking at the water, and there's this sewer field, which I suspected was, was the cause. I went by there, that was clear, it wasn't coming from that. So I went to the Bullwinkle's Bar, which is just past Williams Street, and there's a road that's called Ingleside Avenue. It's not Ingleside Road that goes over, but Ingleside Avenue. It's a little tiny road that comes off of Cooked Lane and goes to Franklin Town Road. Well, on one side, water was pouring out very prodigiously. On the, on the other side of the bridge, the water was just clear as ever. So I called 311, and I said, there's a, there's water flowing. I thought it was a sewer break. And she says, where are you? So I, I told her where I was. She says, oh, you're in the county. I says, it's right at the city-county line. Call the Baltimore City Sewer Department. But I left the complaint there. She should have said, call DPW, or whatever. But at any rate, I called the Baltimore Sewer Company. They came out a couple hours later, called me up. I went down and saw, and he says, that's not a sewer leak, that's a water main leak. I said, well, would you call the Water Department and take care of it? All right. So I go back, this was Saturday morning, 11 o'clock, 12, you know, in that area. I go back Sunday morning, and the water's flowing just as much as ever. So I called 311 again, and I said, call Baltimore County Water Department. So I called Baltimore Water County Department. A couple hours later, a guy comes out, calls me up, I go down and see, he says, oh yeah, this is a 12-inch water main. Here's the valve. This is Sunday, Sunday morning, 11 o'clock. I don't have permission to, to turn it off. I said, well, something's got to be done. You're, there, there's also a big smell of chlorine. So that's, Sunday was our, Sundays in the park, we had the trains running, whatever. So about 4:00 after that had emptied, I went back to the, the site on Sunday, and nothing was there. Nobody was there, water was still pouring out. Monday morning, I go, and water's still pouring out, there was a county pickup truck, and some guys around scratching their head. I go back again about 3:00, and there's three or four more pickup trucks, and people are taking pictures. But it wasn't until 5:00 that Spinello was called by the city, and they finally turned the water off. So I, my point, and this led to about 2,000 fish being killed, including American eels, which was a surprise to me, because I didn't realize there were eagles in the, in the Dead Run River. So my point is, when, when there's a water main break, and that, you know, it's a 12-inch lane, I don't know how many millions, it was 72 hours before the water was turned off. DPW on their website says, we have a 24/7 hotline, and we're, we're on it. Well, they weren't on it, and I, you know, there was a confusion, I guess, as to who was in charge. But Baltimore City runs all of the water into the county. So what I urge 311 operators to be cognizant of the fact that when there's a water main break, no matter whether it's in the county or the city, it's the city responsibility to take care of it. And when you have a 12-inch water main break going into a very sensitive river, you know, there should be a little more action taken. So I don't, I think 20, 20, 72 hours to turn off a 12-inch water main break, I think is too long. And 311 operators need to be made aware of who's in charge of the, the water system. So that's, that's my, my thing. I don't know anything about the, MDE was, was out there, they found, I don't know, so many dead eagles and stuff. They estimated about 2,000 fish were killed. So that's my, my story. If anybody needs the timeline, I've got pictures.
Yeah, the committee members should already have it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they should have copies.
So that's, that's my story.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for your diligence in responding to and reporting what you saw. Are there any questions for Mr. Ferant?
Can I just say one thing?
Yeah, go for it. Councilwoman Clark?
No, I just want to add to what the Chairman has just said. We, we've read the report of what, of all you went through. God bless you. You really, I mean, I wish there was someone like you at every, every stream that we have here in Baltimore City. I know what it takes, because of Wyman Park and the Stony Run and all that, and, you know, but thank you.
Well, the Friends of Gwynne's Falls Leaking Park are very sensitive about the, the stream, and because BGE was tunneling under the stream the past couple of years, anytime there was a change in the stream, we would, we would call Baltimore City, Parks and Recreation, Amy Bowers. Ashley Bowers, Ashley Dickerson, Ashley Bowers, she would come out and monitor. There were a couple of times when they spilt some minerals into the water. And so, so we're normally, we have eyes all the time on that river, and that's why, you know, I would, that's why they called me, because I'm in the park almost every day, so.
Well, it's a very impressive narrative of your work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We've been joined by Vice Chair, Councilmember Bill Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Marcia Collins, would you like to, one, introduce your teams, so we know who's, who's here from DPW, and two, I believe you have a report out, or agency response regarding the incident?
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Committee. My name's Marcia Collins, and I'm here routinely representing the Department of Public Works. We have with us today Yosef Kabibi, who heads up our Bureau of Water and Wastewater, and with him, we have Anthony Galloway, who is our head of their Maintenance Division. We have Kim Grove, who is Chief of the Office of Compliance and Laboratories. And we have Dan Sullivan, who's with the Office of Engineering and Construction, and of course, my compatriot, Janelle Mummy, who we go together as much as possible, and sometimes have to split up and cover dual areas. We provided a bill report, but I also broke out, for the convenience of the Committee, the, while we wrote a narrative, I just did a simple one-pager. So I didn't know if you, everyone would have an opportunity, because we were so late with our bill report, to look at that chronology, but I put it in a very simple format. So what I'd like to do is just kind of give an overview of the chronology of events, and responding to this particular break. And then, as you have questions, we have our members of the Department here to help answer any questions the Committee may have. Okay, first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Ferant for his due diligence. Many times when breaks occur, it is not always our people who find it, but it's many times citizens. And in this particular instance, we have some very dedicated system, citizens who are working diligently to protect our waterways. And so I want to thank Mr. Ferant for all the effort that he put forward to give us notice of this problem. I will say that typically, this type of a break, if it's not a visible area, this is rather out of the way, that the typical person would not necessarily notice it. But usually what we hear first for this type of a break is people calling in for a drop in water pressure. And so that would be a triggering factor for us to go out and see what may be at issue. And in fact, in this instance, after Mr. Ferant reported this break, we were beginning to see people calling in and a drop of water pressure. So Mr. Ferant is correct. We are responsible for the water system, both in Baltimore City and Baltimore County. And we will go back to 311 and make clear to them, although they should be clear, that anyone calling in a break for water main, either in the city or Baltimore County, it's going to go to DPW. We received that referral from 311, the SR, and that was on the 7th, which was a Saturday. And when we got the referral, we had a Maintenance Inspector respond within an hour to that call, and that Maintenance Inspector would be under the control of Anthony Galloway. They went out, they confirmed that indeed it was a water main, and it was a break, and it was a 12-inch line that is suspended underneath the Ingleside Avenue Bridge. This is not unusual to have utility pipes underneath bridges, because your choice is either you hang the pipe off the bridge to get to the other side, or you tunnel underneath the obstruction, either a roadway or a stream or river. This was reported back, and in looking at the size of the pipe, the, the location of the pipe, it was determined that it should be turned over to the Office of Engineering and Construction, who has contractors on call to address these larger pipes. So on Monday, which was September 9, you'll see in your simple chart, the contractor was on site in the afternoon, our Office of Engineering and Construction, and a consulting engineer came on site. And in this instance, what you have to do with a water main break is you have to isolate the break, so you have to start turning off the appropriate valves. Mr. Ferant is correct, there was a valve nearby, and, but as it turned out, we needed to turn off more than one valve to isolate the break. There were two valves that we had to do. And of course, as you turn off valves, you're closing off the water supply, and you have to look at impacted customers. So in this case, we want to, when we start valving off, we want to know that we're there on site, ready to go, ready to make the repairs. So what happened here is that on the mobilization on Monday, September 9, they immediately began to look at valving off, which meant we had to set up a bypass line, so that people could be in water while the repairs were being made. And it wasn't till later, about 5:00 PM, that they realized that just turning off the one main, which impacted about six customers, they'd have to turn off a second valve, and that expanded the impacted customers. So there were periods of time when people were briefly out of water, but because the bypass line was installed, they were fine while the repairs were underway. No one needed to get bottled water and everything, they were very brief interruptions. This particular location required us to contact and coordinate with a variety of people. Number one, it was a bridge, so Baltimore County wanted to make sure that the bridge was okay, and that, you know, people could work in that area. So they ended up shutting it down for safety. We had Baltimore County setting up a traffic control issue. We had to reach out to the State Highway Administration as part of the process. We had our different internal services to, to contact and coordinate with. And in addition, we also had to, I'm trying to just check my notes real quickly. Let's see, and I think there was, yeah, and SHA. So we had a number of people to coordinate with before we could begin the work itself. So we had set up the bypass line, and we're prepared to start valving off, but we had to coordinate with all of these different entities in order to proceed. So the valve, the valving off occurred that, that afternoon and early evening, and the second valve happened about 6:45 PM. The bypass line was in place, and so we could begin to look at the repairs and proceed. And it was determined that the 12-inch main should just be abandoned, based on its size and location and, and condition. And so, on the 10th, it was decided to abandon that main, and then we began, because we were going to turn over the service to a 20-inch main, and connect those residents to, and businesses to that 20-inch main. So that decision then further laid out the plans for what our contractors would have to do. And those excavations and repairs, then we're able to go forward on the 11th. Once we had valved off and put the bypass in, that discharge was no longer going into the stream, and now it was just all about repairs. Those repairs and switching to a 20-inch main were completed on the 13th of September, and then the valve contractor could begin restoring the service to the 20-inch main that we've now attached everyone to on the 16th of September. There was one connection that was at a, an address on St. Agnes Lanes that required some additional parts and connections, so that was delayed until October. They did a planned shutdown and reconnected that individual onto the 20-inch main. So that is the process that we followed. We had a lot of coordination to do because of its location, even though we're responsible for the water mains, we do have to coordinate with Baltimore County. It was attached to a bridge that gave further anxiety, it required us to contact SHA. So there was a lot of coordination that was occurring on the date that, in which we were And having said all that, we have our folks here, and we'd be more than happy to have, take questions from the Committee.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Henry?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I noted in Mr. Ferant's chronology that when he first called 311 in the city on Saturday morning, he was told to call the Baltimore County Sewer People. But from what you're saying, no matter where the break is occurring, it's going to be DPW that's going to be responsible.
Well, that is true for water. Mr. Ferant, I'm assuming based on his narrative, thought it may be a sanitary sewer line, and in Baltimore County, they are responsible for the sanitary sewer.
Ah, they do their own sewer line, okay.
So when you're not, and there's no reason why he would necessarily know what pipe it is, so I think that started the initial confusion.
Then all I needed to understand was that we would refer people for a sewer line.
Correct. However, but water lines are very clear, we're responsible for, so I'm not sure what happened when he called back about the water line, where the confusion would, should be there at 311. That would be our responsibility.
Councilmember Clark?
This is like 101. It was sewage that was coming into the stream. And, but that was a water line?
No, it wa, it was not sewage. The, the concern, I don't want to speak for Mr. Ferant, but he was seeing a cloudy water. He saw a pipe, and it was leaking. He didn't necessarily know if it was a water main or a sewer pipe.
Who would?
Which, right. He wouldn't necessarily know. So that's, he started out reporting it as, as a potential sewer break, but in fact, it was a water main that broke. And it was causing a stirring up of the water and cloudiness in the street.
Oh, chlorine, oh, right. That's where chlorine came from.
Yes, and he did mention later that he had a strong smell of chlorine, so.
And that's in the water lines?
Correct. We have to keep a certain level of chlorine in your distribution system because of the distance it travels. You don't want any pathogens or slime building up in the pipes, to put it nicely. And so you have to keep a residual amount of chlorine in a, in a water distribution system.
And that's how you can identify what kind of a pipe or line is affected?
Well, certainly one way, certainly one way, but it wouldn't necessarily, again, it wouldn't necessarily be immediately evident to someone. And certainly, our inspectors would go out and verify what it was. So they wouldn't, they wouldn't standing, say, standing and looking down, assume, assume anything. They'd have to look at the pipe and...
So that's what happened?
Initially, that was...
Initially, on Saturday, was an inspector did come out from us.
Yes, when, when we, when the city received the water complaint.
You knew what it was, or at least you, well, knew it wasn't sewage, or, I don't know. An inspector came out.
Well, we spend, we send out trained folks under Mr. Galloway to check, and they would confirm one way or the other.
At that point, that this is water, this is a water line?
Yes, 12 inches in diameter.
Right, so I got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Henry?
Okay. So some point on Sunday, a city inspector responded and confirmed that it was a break in a clean water line.
Actually, Saturday.
It was Saturday.
I'm sorry, Saturday, the 7th.
Yes.
And then, the next thing on the city's chronology is September 9th, the afternoon.
Yes.
And so...
That's all the mobilization that was occurring after the coordination, and they were mobilizing on site by that afternoon on Monday.
Okay, so I guess the question is, is this routine, that if we find that a break has been confirmed on day one afternoon, that there is no mobilization until day three afternoon? Or is it the weekend that was the problem?
I wouldn't say it's routine. I mean, every situation is different. Once you confirm what it is, and once you decide, in this case, Maintenance would respond typically, but in this case, it was a larger pipe that they wouldn't typically handle, so then we have to hand off to Engineering and Construction to mobilize a contractor to respond.
Okay, so...
So had it been a small pipe that Maintenance would be able to take care of, then they would have mobilized the Maintenance individuals to come out.
Okay, so let me practice my reflective listening. There is some threshold level of pipe that Maintenance can handle itself in-house, and above that threshold size of pipe, it would be referred to Engineering and Construction to go bring in an outside contractor.
It is, in general, yes, but the other issue could be the depth of the excavation. We have some pipes in the city, they're 20 feet or more underground. So it's a combination of size, it could be location, and it could be the depth.
And...
And I, you know, I just want to make sure I'm speaking correctly.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I guess then, let me try asking my question with a little bit more nuance.
Okay.
If it requires involving Engineering and Construction and an outside contractor, that ratchets up the response time to more like 36 hours, as opposed to something that could be done faster because we're only dealing with our own people?
I...
I wouldn't exactly say that, but...
No. Anthony, why don't you come up here?
You can, you can speak from there, the mic is on.
Just grab it off your desk, like, pull it out.
What made this situation a little bit complicated was because the pipe failure was inside the bridge.
Okay, no, I, I get that. I get, I get that this is a, a more complicated situation. I'm trying to get a sense of time. Like, how long does it take, once you, once you know that you've got to involve Engineering and Construction and bring in an outside contractor, that then is going to take how long?
Well, it depends on the situation. You know, it could be immediately, or it could be, in this situation, 72 hours. It varies. It varies on the situation.
Yeah, what are the, what are the factors that, that change that?
Okay, I guess coordination with other municipalities or stakeholders, you know, it varies. In this situation, we had to involve the state, the county, you know, and sometimes, you know, there's somewhat friction between agencies when we're trying to coordinate an effort.
Okay. I'd like to acknowledge that Dominic McNeely from the Council President's Office has joined us. Councilmember, if you remember the public who's trying to ask the questions. Well, we, typically what we do, yes, you will testify, but what we typically do, that's what I was asking you guys, I wanted to go as a group at first, we usually do the back and forth with the Council, and then get more testimony in. But we do have you on the list.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
Councilmember Risinger?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Marcie, just to piggyback on Councilman Henry, so when this happened, it was the same process that DPW always does, like, whether, whether it was on a, a street or an alley, you went through the same process, it was just that it depended on the situation regards to the bridge and, and the surroundings. So, but regards to 311, and the city and the county, do you feel that maybe there should be a better communication? Was there a breakdown in communication? Was that an issue, or was just the environment and the situation that took so long?
I won't speak for Mr. Ferant, but the fact that initially he thought it could be, he suspected a sanitary line, then 311 did correctly refer to Baltimore County. However, that wasn't the case, so that's why there was some confusion in that regard. I, I think that many times when breaks are reported, it's not known whether it's a sanitary or sewer line. What complicated this particular, slightly complicated this particular response is it was located in Baltimore County. So if the, if the bridge had been in Baltimore City, and they, it was a suspected sewer pipe break, but it turned out to be a water line break, it wouldn't have mattered, because it was in Baltimore City, and Anthony would have sent out an inspector who would know what, which it was, and would, would respond appropriately. I think in this particular instance, because it was right across the line in the county, on a county bridge, that just delayed the conversation somewhat. And, and then ultimately, because it was on the bridge, we had to coordinate with their bridge... bridge people and so on. It just added another layer of complexity to coordination prior to us touching anything and beginning to valve off. We don't want to valve off until we know we can mobilize. And at the very least, if we can put in a bypass line, then, then we have the freedom to, to take, to do what we have to do in a manner that, you know, gives us the room to do it without keeping people out of water for a prolonged period of time.
Yeah, it, it just, it just leaves our, I don't know whether bad taste or whatever that, you know, and I don't want to go blame a mood on Baltimore County, the gentleman said they're standing around looking at it, and hear this water's gushing out. So, okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Councilmember Clark?
Yeah, I just wanted to say one thing. I read the, you know, the report that we were given before, the testimony, and what stuck out in my mind, now that I'm hearing what happened, is just that the neighbors didn't, I, I don't know, but I guess there's going to be another testimony coming from there, but how would they know all this while they're running back to check on it? It's just a matter of, how would they know that we, that we identified that it was a water line and that it was our responsibility, and that we had the complications with the bridge, and with Baltimore County, and with the State Highway Administration, and, you know, all that to get together and then mobilize our contractor, because of the size of the meter, all of which took time, so that unless you know what's going on, or some sense of what's going on, you think it's just, nothing's going on. But how would a person know? Do you understand what I'm saying? Like, if you're on the ground and you're part of the neighborhood and you're looking at things, how could you ever know?
Well, you wouldn't necessarily know, because what we put in, and my understanding, since I don't do this, but what I understand just in talking with our folks, that this information is ultimately put into the work orders as part of the 311 referral, but that's not done contemporaneously with the activity. So they wouldn't necessarily know.
Right.
Mr. Ferrant mentioned that, you know, the first time he saw people actively starting to do something was in the afternoon of Monday, which would be correct, and which agrees with our chronology, because now we've got people in place, we've got everybody ready to rock and roll, we can start valving off because we're putting in a bypass line, which was good because we ended up having to shut down two valves, but they wouldn't necessarily know that.
But if, if the system were such that you could call, that 311 knew that, I know this is asking a lot, that 311 knew that city's on it mobilizing, they'll be on site, should be on site Monday, something like that, anything.
Yeah.
It would probably help, and the only way you really could do it would be through 311.
Well, I would, I would note that they could, I didn't get a call to my office as well, because I, had I gotten a call about this, when it was occurring, I could have communicated, I would have known to communicate to the community group, and I, unless you want to finish your question, I wanted to...
No, no, I think I, I'm not sure it was a question. I was just trying to think out loud about how the neighbors could know, and I'm not sure, I know, I mean, you're right.
I think, yeah, I think that's sort of the larger, the challenge, just generally, not really with this issue, but just that coordination with the council office, because I would know that you got a call from Mr. Ferrant and who he, who he was, if not, we can chase him down, but I think that's sort of another struggle that we have is with communication, because I didn't know about the incident until I got a call from him much later, and then it was in the press, and now I'm wondering what's going on.
Right.
And I never got a response, any, any information from the communications.
Right. And, and in this particular case, the only way that Mr. Ferrant could know is he was coming back and checking periodically, still seeing the break there, and not seeing necessarily any activity that would indicate something was going to, in a positive direction for him was going to happen. But I'm not sure how we resolve that issue, other than if you have an interested party to query us, because, you know, we routinely handle main breaks and sewer line breaks and, and other issues that are reported to us. I don't know how we could...
You can't. I mean, it's too many, in too many places.
You know, because here you had a very strong interested party, and, you know, in this particular case, there was coordination that was going on that he may or may not be aware of, but all he's seeing is the break still continuing and assuming that we're, we're not doing anything to respond. So I'm not sure how you address that on a routine basis.
Well, if I can just say one thing, because I don't want to leave it there, on a routine basis, we get great response about progress from water waste, water maintenance, more than you could expect, because there's so many things going on all over the region, let alone the city. But in that case, you've got to know, people like us need to know what's happening so we can communicate it and get feedback on behalf of the constituents, so.
Yeah, and so I mean, on that note, I would say, yes, and I would agree with that, that I've had great communication. Once I know it exists, I don't have a problem getting both information in and out to interested parties, and, you know, I have great communication with every community association and, and most stakeholders in my district. So I, I would wager that, I think one piece, way I can, and I've seen this change, after this incident occurred, I have started to receive notifications of water main breaks via email, regardless of where they are in the city, at least the sanitary side, I've been getting emails now. I was not getting them at this point, but, so I would give kudos that, that communication is happening now. I, I would, the, so I would say that's one way, is just to communicate with the council office, that, hey, there's a serious incident that may take multiple days to respond to due to a complicated series of events that led to this, can, do you know who needs to know about this? And put it on us to be that medium to figure out who needs to know this information. Is it residents? Is it a community group? Is it a church? Let us track it down, and that way, we can continue to provide those updates as to what's happening. As I said, in this incident, I found out after the fact. And so, of course, I'm frustrated, the community's frustrated, I don't even know what's going on, and, you know, I think that's where the communication can be a little bit more proactive, which I know you're capable of, because you're doing it now. So, you know, I'd both say that's one way to handle it. The, I had other questions around this, this coordination piece. Is there a, a standing regional, regional communication that's occurring between DPW and the city-county side that's beyond just sort of incident response, that, that occurs on an ongoing basis between the city and the county? As it relates to infrastructure?
We, we, well, you're very familiar with our consent decree that manages the sanitary system. Baltimore County also has a consent decree for their sanitary system, and in some cases, the flow from Baltimore County goes directly into city pipes. So we routinely coordinate and communicate about our progress on our own respective consent decrees. We interact on projects that may have county flow, either water or wastewater, and that we're doing work on. Sometimes, we have to wait until the county completes their portion before we work our portion. So we do routinely coordinate those types of activities. I, I would say, in this particular instance, because this was hanging from a bridge, not a big bridge, but a bridge, that, and located in the county, even though we're required and take care of the water mains, that was more coordination than you typically do when you have a water main break out in the county. As far as communication in general, my office, and by my office, I mean Janelle, has been kind enough to, we get now all the water main break lists, they're updated sometimes three or four times a day, and she has been pushing out the various council and state districts' activities within your borders. We also have the Water Main Break Interactive Map online, which prior to getting this list, I would go to routinely, just to make sure we're aware of the, the problem. So that has been happening, you are correct, but I don't, what you're asking for, I think, is a little bit more than a heads up, I think, aren't you?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just concerned about how we manage, because of the number of breaks, both large, small, sometimes small ones can be a problem, just because of where they're located, how many people impacted, and vice versa.
Well, really, when I, and I had a few questions around that, but really, what I'm trying to get at is that, is there, I know at one point, there was a city-county sort of regional agreement related to, I think it was a, was it stormwater, or?
Yes, it was, there was stormwater, there's a regional agreement on bay restoration, we have agreements on our water and sewer that, that is provided to adjacent counties. So we have a lot of agreements.
Yeah, and so really, what I'm trying to get at is there, in, in my mind, and again, obviously, I don't want to make it sound easier than it is, but one, one thing that I would hope it could occur, even if it was a quarterly basis, annual basis, but some sort of regional staff meeting, sharing of information, infrastructure assessment, and maybe that is happening, I don't know, but, so that, one, there's, because, I mean, you, I, I know that the agency does have an idea as to what pipes are more vulnerable to break, just given how old they are. I mean, everything has a useful life that we know exists, whether that be 100 years, 40 years, 50 years. I know for sure the agency knows where those pipes are, and so, one, is there a shared assessment of that information, or shared communication that, hey, this particular area may be vulnerable? Or B, because it sounded like there was also, because there were city-county and state coordination that needed to happen, it sounded like from your testimony, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there was also, part of the delay was like figuring out who to communicate with on the county side? And if I misunderstood that, please correct me, but it sounded like that part of the delay was, it, it, okay, if you want to respond, yeah, but...
Yeah, when we communicate with the county, oh, I'm sorry, I'm Dan Sullivan, I'm an engineer with Office of Engineering and Construction, so when we communicate with the county, there's a few people that we talk about. It wasn't a confusion of who to discuss, it was more of, how are we going to fix this problem? Was it, you know, are we going to tear up the bridge? Are we going to abandon the main? Are we going to do something else? So that was just kind of the coordination in the repair effort, not necessarily figuring out who to communicate to.
And, and so I would say, just generally, what can both the, the council and public expect from this incident? That we could expect a quicker response time? Or is it simply that, just given the complicated nature, that people should expect that it'll take 72, 36 to 72 hours? And I think that's sort of what the councilman was getting at, but are, are there ways that this can be improved?
Well, we can certainly look at that. I, I think in this instance, the location in an adjacent jurisdiction, the fact that we have to touch another jurisdiction's structure, it's not in the ground, it's, it's attached to a bridge, added to the concern in bringing in more people at the county level, and ultimately State Highway Administration, that layered all of the people we were coordinating with and discussing what our future actions would be, and ultimately, we decided not to repair that particular structure, but to create connections to a nearby 20-inch water main. So that would have occurred no matter what. Prior, your, your previous statement, we do routinely share our capital program with Baltimore County, because they have to, for those pipes, for example, that, that they receive water from, or channel their sewage through on its way to our treatment plants, they pay a percentage of their flow, whatever their flow is on that particular pipe, it's 45%, 30%, 36%, 51%, whatever it is, they pay that portion of that capital project. So we're not only looking at our priorities within our city and, and taking our capital programs forward to try to avoid these kinds of breaks, but also, we coordinate with the county, because they're expected to have that money available to participate in those capital projects. So we routinely share our capital plans and programs, we routinely let them know of what we're doing, and of course, we share our communications on the consent decree. So I wouldn't say that, and our director was meeting routinely with the regional directors of Public Works, just to discuss any other issues. So there is a lot of connection here. I think this, in this particular situation, there was a confluence of issues that slowed the process down, but ultimately got a, a good result, but it took coordination.
And the last question I have, before we go to testimony, or unless my colleagues have further questions, part of what stood out to me in this incident as well, because obviously, I'm in regular communication on just, I'd say, a normal water main break, which is typically on a street, impacting residents, and sort of that, you know, communication is great, and I, I think the response, given the infrastructure we have, is, is pretty solid. The, is there a way to improve the response time when there's an ecological impact? Because I think that's where this sort of differentiates. If there's a water main break on my block, and my water's out, you know, I, I do have some ability to, you know, go get water, go to a neighbor's house, go to a friend, you know, I can move out of the situation where, when we talk about the ecology of the park and our waterways, the fish don't have that sort of privilege to go anywhere else. Are there ways that we can improve the response time, given the ecological impact, that is acknowledged in the consent decree itself, as it relates to the harbor, wastewater going into the harbor, water, you know, I mean, these are things that occur somewhat routinely, and have an ecological impact that sort of is a little bit different than just a residential impact.
Correct.
And I know that in this situation, you had to balance both. Can you speak to where, where there are opportunities to do a better job there? Because again, those, these are causes irreparable damage to a, a natural resource that we have, which is Gwynne Falls, the Ken Park, the Dead Run, the harbor, I mean, these are, and just sort of, we know the larger narrative around climate change and, and the impacts there. So I mean, can we do, do a better job at mitigating the ecological impact that these sort of incidents have, and, and how that can, is there a way to have a more rapid response in, in when we, we have these situations? Similar to, we know that if there's a large, and I'll give another example, you know, the, the water main break at Poe Homes required a different response than one would on North Bend Road.
Yes.
Given the size of the impact and how many people, and I would argue that, given, you know, we should have that same consideration for the environment as we do for folks who live in neighborhoods, just given the circumstances here.
Yes, so the example of Poe Homes is a good one, even though it's, it's not an ecological issue, but it, what we did is we hired an individual to work with us to push out communication, and in all of the similar facilities that we have around the city that HABC manages, the large group area homes, subsidized homes, and so we've added that individual to our team to do that. So what I'm hearing you say is that in this instance, perhaps we should have put a more ecological prioritization on this particular issue than you feel we did. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to talk a little?
Sure. Reduce yourself a bit.
Joseph Cabeda, acting bureau head for the Bureau of Water, Waste, Water. So, so in general, obviously, our, our priority is maintaining, or minimizing the interruption of service to ratepayers, and along with that, we always look for making sure that the structural integrity of the roads and whatever else is in the surrounding area is also preserved. The, the question about ecological impact is also very critical, and so what we've done, partly, but not totally, in response to this particular situation, is we, it's really all about awareness for our personnel. So we have had MDE attend various training sessions for our maintenance personnel, in terms of how do you mitigate the introduction of, of drinking water to a stream, for instance, or a storm drain. The situation at Dead Run is not exactly in that, that type of scenario, but we have situations where we may have to open up hydrants. but we have situations where we may have to open up hydrants or let water flow into a storm drain. And so we, with their verbal concurrence, we have provided training and awareness training, as well as operational training, to make sure that we dechlorinate the water before it goes into a stream, thereby bringing down the, the chlorine levels that could potentially impact life. Okay?
How do you do that?
Councilwoman Clark?
Thanks. Not to prolong, but how do you, how, like, how do you dechlorinate the water that was running in, while it's running into the stream? How do you dechlorinate it?
Well, again, the scenarios are, are, the scenario of the Dead Run, that would have been a, a little more difficult to, to actually undertake a dechlorination operation. But I'm more so talking about the situations where we have to operate fire hydrants. And before we operate a fire hydrant, we can use dechlorination tablets. Dechlorination tablets before flushing. So that, that brings down the
If it flushes into a stream, it will be less deadly.
It will have
To marine life.
The chlorine loading will be less, yes, yes.
Okay, so that's how, I mean, it's sort of like
And it is
A controlled situation.
A controlled situation.
Okay.
A controlled, but again, you know, if, if it is, while we're responding to an unplanned emergency, there are times where hydrants are, are operated.
Hydrants.
Hydrants, yes.
Gotcha. I got you, thank you.
Thank you. With there being no further comment from the committee, oh.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I wanted to call up Kim Grove to just speak briefly on this topic. Thank you.
Good morning. So the city's system is covered through an NPDS permit. That's a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit. We are required with that permit with any known or planned discharges of potable water to measure certain things, such as chlorine, to make sure that it is not going to have an impact. This situation, though, you're absolutely correct, in that the large discharge underneath of a bridge, where it's going directly into the stream, there's not a lot of practices that are out there that would have allowed that contact time to allow for that dechlorination happening. But we do have under our permit for the city and the system, that when we have planned discharges, that we do allow for dechlorination to be happening, and that we sample those discharges as well. So a lot of times when we have, say, unidirectional flushing of our system, we do the sampling under the permit, and we report those results to MDE.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we have two individuals sign up to testify. So we'll call Jack Latimore.
Councilman, thank you, council members. I appreciate the councilman turning the focus back to the ecological problem. That was the primary issue. This spill, as Ms. Grove referred to, does come out of the NPDES Surface Waters of the U.S. And the Maryland Department of Environment came out, cited the city for violating the state pollution laws. We, the Friends of Gwyns Falls, Leacon Park, and I, and I have the, the citation here. The Friends of Gwyns Falls, Leacon Park asked that the State Department, Maryland Department of Environment, follow the remedy which they have developed, which is a fine. We have asked them to pursue resolution of this case. Our understanding is that the MO of them, MDE, is just to sort of set these things aside until people forget about them. We don't want them to forget about them. We lost endangered species, and we want to see this issue brought to a close by the Maryland Department of Environment. We've, we've spoken with them twice now. We want to see it come to resolution, and we want to see them pursue a remedy. We don't necessarily want to see DPW find, that is the remedy that the state offers. What, what we want to see is that somebody take responsibility for this, for this spill. Now, as Ms. Collins has noted, and, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak, because we weren't aware of their timeline before we got to the hearing. A DPW person actually was on-site within one hour of being notified of it Saturday morning. So DPW was on-site within an hour, and they knew what was happening. And they did not send a crew out to fix it for 72 hours. Now that's the problem. The message I got, that I heard Ms. Collins say, was that the larger the emergency, the slower the response. Now, we also heard that this, the situat, this was an unused water main. That, and they'll have to address that. That was something that I heard along the line. One of the people that came out and inspected said, well, this is an unused line anyway. So, so whether or not customers were impacted, it, it just strikes me as, as amazing that we would, we would have this narrative that, well, because the emergency was so large, that's why it took us so long to respond. I mean, that is unsatisfactory. The bigger the emergency, the quicker the response should be. And, and we are not concerned here, of course, we're concerned about residents and customers and humans, but I appreciate you bringing it back to the ecological problem, okay? That was the primary issue here, particularly if this was an unused main. Millions of gallons were allowed to go into the Dead Run in those 72 hours. Now, I don't care how many dechlorinating tablets you have. The only way to get rid of that pollution is to let it dissipate, and that's what happened. In the meantime, they were being cited by MDE for violating the state pollution laws. We want to see that case resolved, and we want to see some sort of remedy. Somebody has to take responsibility for this. So I don't believe there was a communication breakdown at all. It's not Mr. Ferentz's role to decide whether it's sewer water or chlorinated water. If DPW responded within an hour Saturday morning and had a person on-site, then they should have gotten their 24/7 crew out there and turned off the water main, and then back up. They didn't do that, because the emergency was so big. So I, I find their response lacking. And we are pressing the Maryland Department of Environment to pursue this case, and, and with their remedies. Thank you.
Thank you. Alice Valapita?
Thank you, Chairman Burnett and council members, for allowing me to speak on this matter today. My name is Alice Valapita. I'm the Baltimore Harbor Water Keeper at Blue Water Baltimore. So I submitted written testimony previously. Hopefully you'll have a chance to read that. So I won't reiterate most of the comments that I made in my written statement, but I completely agree with Mr. Ferent and Mr. Latimore, that this was an ecological disaster, and that's really what we're here to talk about today. The first statement in DPW's brief history of this incident is that a call was originally placed to Baltimore County. But according to Mr. Ferent, that's not true. The original call was to 311, and that is where the breakdown began. So if a citizen is making all of the right moves, if they see something that's happening, they know it's not right, it's not up to that citizen to, to know which department to dispatch, or to know exactly the difference between a water main break and a sewer line break. That's DPW's role to play. And their lackluster response resulted in a bad situation becoming even worse. So ultimately, I understand that water main breaks happen in this city. We have aging infrastructure. It happens. But the response of DPW is directly related to the ecological disaster that we saw. In my written testimony, I did mention that I've had the opportunity to see American eel in our streams. I saw one in the Jones Falls four years ago, and it was so impactful to me that I still remember it, four years later. And, you know, they're incredible fish species. They actually swim thousands of miles out to the Sargasso Sea to return to their spawning grounds, generation after generation. They swim through the underground pitch-black pipes in the city, the ones that are buried underground. They swim through those pipes out to sea and back. They're incredible, they're amazing. And 78 of them, dozens of them, were killed. They were poisoned by chlorinated water. And as I said, I understand pipe breaks happen, but this lackluster response didn't have to happen. This incident didn't have to be as bad as it was. When somebody pours motor oil into a storm drain in the city, they're held accountable. When a factory discharges heavy metals into the water, they're held accountable. And DPW needs to be held accountable in this situation for their part in this disaster. And if that means reviewing the procedures and making new procedures in, in the case of potential terrible environmental impacts, and that's what that means, I think it's inexcusable just to look at what happened and say, well, this is what happened. That's standard operating procedure, everything's fine, we did everything by the book. Well, that's not good enough in this situation. And we're all here today to make sure that something like this isn't as bad the next time it happens. Because let's be clear, it probably will. Something like this could potentially happen again, because that's the city we live in, that's the infrastructure we have. So let's make a plan moving forward, so that it's not as bad the next time. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to testify in the public? All right. Point, points, all points heard, and I will make the, make the commitment to following up, because I do have additional questions on the response as it relates to sort of this ecological piece. So I will be reaching out to Ms. Collins to discuss further, as well as Friends of and Blue Water, to look at how other municipalities, maybe there's some things that we can adopt. Again, to the earlier point, that, you know, people have abilities to move in many cases. Obviously, sometimes that does not apply to everybody. We know that there are some people who are stuck when the water goes out, and, and we, you know, have to accommodate that. But in this instance, you know, again, the environmental impact here is why we were here today and requested this hearing. It's not the first time that we've had a water main break or a sewer break in an ecological setting. And I do believe that there should be a different response. Obviously, I do also understand bureaucracy very well at this point, in my third year in office, and how that does actually impact response times. And so I do want to acknowledge that, and, and to know that that is a reality of this work. But I also do know that there are best practices, and, and that ultimately, we have to be good stewards of our environment, or we won't have one. And, and so I, I think this has to be taken seriously. We are going to vote the resolution out today, but this will not be the end of the conversation. And I would like to work with the agency to figure out how we can better respond in these instances. Because again, the, this has a lasting impact on the city of Baltimore and the residents of Baltimore. And we do have a responsibility to be environmental stewards of the city that we live in and, and the environment that we live in. With that, I'm going to move, is there a motion to vote on the council resolution 19-0183R?
A move.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Henry, seconded by Councilwoman Clark. Burnett, I'm a yes. Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Reisinger?
Yes.
Councilmember Slifer is absent. The motion passed. The committee will recommend a favorable report to the council resolution 19-0183R. The resolution will be placed on second reader on Monday, January 27th, 2020. The full council will review and take a vote at their time. And if there is no other business, the committee is now adjourned. Thank you all for attending.